I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, January 31st, 2024. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will begin with the superintendent and two members of the board updates.
All right. January 31st, the last day of January before we roll into February. BECA Scholarship Fair is coming up in the first week of February, well, really, the first official long, the first week in February. Great opportunity. Please make sure that you put it on your schedule from 4:30 to 6:30 at USMSM, formerly the Southern Maryland Higher Ed Center, where they'll have a lot of people. They talk about the scholarships, the criteria, the providers. It's a great opportunity. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that's available to our young people to help them start their post-secondary careers. And it's not only scholarships for traditional two-year, four-year colleges, but it's also opportunities for industry and trades and things such as that. So please make sure that if you have a, if you have, if you're staring at a senior at your house right now, this is where you should be, February 7th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. I have the St. Mary's County Public Schools Annual Report, hot off the presses. This is a fantastic publication that we put out every single year. It's our way to get it ready so that we can put it in people's hands. We did a little rush on it this year, and the reason why I asked Dr. Marr and his fantastic team over in Strategic Operations is, we need it because on Friday, the governor, Governor Marr, is coming back down to St. Mary's again. And he's bringing with him his entire cabinet to view, to tour the, I believe it's Pax River stuff, it's USMSM, but he is also going to be going over to the Forest Center because he did not have an opportunity to walk around, to talk to more than just a handful of students, to see the great work that's going on. So we needed to make sure that we had our annual report ready so that we could hand him some St. Mary's County information and maybe even a little swag, so he continues to talk about what great things are going on down here in the mother county. Now, we only have a limited number of these printed out because they are expensive. So if you are interested in seeing the annual report, all you have to do, if you want to know about St. Mary's County Public Schools, and us being as transparent as we can possibly be, you go to smcps.org. That's our website. When you go to our website, there's a little thing that says "About Us." So if you want to know about us, you would click on the "About Us" little part. Now, this is a drop-down landing page with all kinds of information. All the, now, of course, it does have the annual report, which is great, but it also tells you all kinds of information about enrollment, demographics, dropout rate, graduation rate, has all of our MCAP scores listed through there, even has all of the Office of Civil Rights data collection that we gather together every single year and send up to MSDE. You don't have to go to the MSDE and try to navigate it. You can just go to the "About Us" page and find all this information about St. Mary's County Public Schools. So if you wanted to know what the average class size was, boom, you want to go there. You want to know what the enrollment is at a particular elementary school? Boom, you want to go there. You want to know how many kids were suspended and what they were suspended for? But you can go right there. Now, it is put together for everybody in the state, so that you can also compare it to other counties as well. So we are, we try to put all of our stuff out there, so you know everything you want to know about St. Mary's County Public Schools. It's a great piece of work. Please make sure that you go and visit the site. We are coming up also next week on our third Stakeholder Information Night, our third Town Hall. We've done the first one on early childhood on November 7th. We did our second one, Pillar Four Resources for Student Success, in December, on December 5th. And then next week, we are going to do College and Career Readiness. Now, that makes sense because we're also doing the BECA Fair for how you're going to pay for all those things as you get ready to go into the next phase of your, of your learning life. But this is going to be a great night, and it's going to be also held at the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. It starts at 6 o'clock. We want to see a full room, lots of people there. But even if you cannot make it, and please try to be there in person, because afterwards, we have a great informal, informative session where we're interacting and answering questions. If you can't make it, it will be live broadcast, and then it will also be uploaded to our YouTube page, so you can watch it later on. So you could go and attend in person, ask your questions, really enjoy it, and then later on, you could go back and actually watch the videotape of it as well. I guess it's not videotape, it's a streaming digital media stuff. So that's great. The last one is going to be the best one, which is Teachers and Leaders, and that happens in March. We're going to be talking about all of our incredible people who do work every single day on behalf of our children in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So since the last time we've met, now, I've shed, well, we, no, that's not true. Ms. Kibler and I, we did do one visit to, to the Charter School, so we had our, that was our last fifth-grade visit. But then I branched out on my own, and I went to Greenview Knolls, George Washington Carver, Town Creek Elementary School, Chesapeake Public Charter School, but we were doing that together, Captain Walter Francis Duke, Esperanza Middle, Margaret Brent Middle, Leonardtown High, and my whole purpose for going there, as I just show up and the principal, it's kind of dealer's choice. I get to, I got to read to a whole bunch of kindergarten kids at Captain Walter Francis Duke, and then we built the Three Little Pigs Houses, and I tried to blow them down with Big Bad Wolf at Captain Walter Francis Duke. We also did a lunch bunch from these fantastic kids that had earned special points for being great, and we played Taco Cat Goat Cheese Pizza.
Nice.
A card game where you, you put down and you have to go and order, and if, and then one of the cards is a narwhal, and if you flip the narwhal, you have to make the narwhal, and whoever's the last person to make the narwhal gets all the cards in the middle. So that's me doing a narwhal. Great, great stuff. Leonardtown High School, during their one lunch, they do karaoke.
Karaoke.
And the karaoke, I mean, that was just, that was just, there's just a lot, there's a lot of stuff going on in our schools.
You zoom in, I'm in that picture in that audience.
You're in there, yeah, you're in there someplace. And the young lady who was up on stage, she's the one that won, and I,
Yes.
I can't remember her name off the top of my head.
I can't either.
No.
I was, I was so enamored by her singing that I,
Drawing blank, yeah. But there, I mean, there are, there are just great things going on in all of our schools. And please understand that the, the, the learning and joy and the E. Connected, Accountable, Resilient.
Excitement.
Excitement. Excited to learn. You can see it in our schools, and it's been a lot of fun seeing all that. We finished our athletics, and we had some incredible standouts. Leonardtown High School, Lincoln Bauer, he was honored as the All-State Honorable Mention for, you know, he's a sophomore. He's the only sophomore to earn that All-State title for boys. Unbelievable recognition. And then Leonardtown High School, Luke Kukulios, who is the coach of the boys soccer team at Leonardtown High School, and they are, of course, the,
State champs.
State champs. So he got recognized for his incredible work with all of those kids. Also, indoor track, Leonardtown High School, Elena Blotnickur. She is the SMAC champion in the 1600 and the 3200 meter run. She set a SMAC record of five minutes, six seconds, and .43. It's almost five minutes, six seconds. Pretty amazing. Chopticon High School, Weston Carr, he is the SMAC champion for the 800, and he set a SMAC record, one minute, one out, one minute, 57 seconds, .61. Pretty darn impressive. These kids are fast. Supporting Services, one of our largest construction projects this year is Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. And just a little update on how it's going. It's a multi-phased, building-occupied project. So we have a before and after. It is, it's, it's amazing work. Again, it's going very, very well. It is, I believe, ahead of schedule, a little bit ahead of schedule. The, the staff at the school, I cannot say enough about the flexibility of the staff when you are asking them to move all of their stuff out of a space and then all of their stuff back into a space. It really, it really is incredible. And one of the fun things that they did was Letty Marshall Dent, on one of the professional days, they went with the staff of Mechanicsville Elementary School, and they had a kickball game and kind of talked about, you know, the trials and tribulation of an occupied, multi-phased renovation, and they got to tour the building and see what all the, what all the pain and suffering is worth, because it's such a beautiful building at the end. And so that was a great, it was a really great thing. So to all of Supporting Services, to, who is the project lead on this one? Alex? Dr. Jeffers?
Todd Whitlock.
Todd Whitlock. Todd Whitlock. So under Paul, under Paul Leano and Todd Whitlock, I mean, they're just doing an incredible job of managing all of that. So it is February. Tomorrow, we are all the way through. We have our Board of Ed meeting. This, this, this ends our budget push of board meetings, and then we go back to regular meeting schedules where we have an AM in the first part and then a PM in the, but it has been a fun, it's been a fun.
Can we still see everyone next week?
It's been, it's been good seeing everybody. So, but we'll, we'll be back on schedule. Report cards to get distributed next Tuesday. Yay. We have the Blueprint Town Hall on the, on the 8th, two-hour dismissal on the 9th, and President's Day, no school for students on the 19th, and that's one of the snow makeup days, but we have had no snow days, so there you go. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Lillian Kibler.
All right. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. So I actually have a really short border for tonight, so we're going to get right into it. So a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Smith and I had one of what felt like our first school visits in a very long time, even though he's been hustling away in all the other school visits without me sadly. But we had a first one in a while, and that was to the one and only Chesapeake Public Charter School. And I have to say, after a couple of weeks ago, the public hearing at the board, I was super excited to see the Charter School because we heard such great, great things about them, and they absolutely lived up to the hype. They were wonderful. So they're pretty much the only school that we have to talk about today for the SMCPS care reports, and totally not because they were the only school I visited. But so they're super connected through their community gatherings. They also have Lights at Lunch and the Third Grade Opera, which is a great example of a class-level activity engagement that they do. I can't wait for the Third Grade Opera. They also do slopping the chickens. So slop stands for Stuff Left on Plate. So the Charter School has their very own chickens, which is wild. I'm super jealous. I love chickens. I've always wanted chickens. And so with the stuff left on their plate, they slop the chickens and feed them. It's kind of a competition to see how many pounds of slop they can slop to the chickens. So that is super exciting. It keeps them very connected. They are accountable because they have the Crab Virtues, which stands for Compassionate, Responsible, Always Positive, and Be Honest. And that is because their mascot is the crab. And during their community gatherings, what's that?
Aretha.
Aretha, the crab.
Right, Aretha, Aretha the Crab.
Aretha the Crab.
R-A-S-P-E-C-T.
Yes. The crab, like, the theme song for the crab, like, she walks out to R-A-S-P-E-C-T, which is fabulous. Great song, great name, great all of it. But so during those community gatherings, when everything, the crab is there, super phenomenal students who have been upholding their crab virtues very well can be nominated to high-five and get recognized by Aretha the Crab, so that keeps them very accountable. And then, of course, the slop competition is a big deal. They're resilient because they can reset at recess, rejuvenate, and re-center. They can bounce back and always persevere, and they also have wonderful guidance counselors that work with their students to help them keep them on track. They're very excited to learn because they have science labs in their STEM for all, like elephant toothpaste. They also take awesome overnight field trips to Echo Hill and North Bay. And then this is very unique to the Charter School. They have exchange students from France. So students come over from France, and it's very eye-opening, and, you know, it really expands their horizons. They get to learn about other cultures. And then a lucky few students in eighth grade, once they come of age, can also go to France and kind of, you know, complete the swap, which is so cool. I'm super jealous. It's very eye-opening, very unique to the Charter School as well. They have Spirit Week. They also take field trips to the Wax Museum.
Oh, they do have Wax Museum.
They, they do have Wax Museum, that's correct. Yeah, oh, yes, because they, they dress up like a character, and then they, they become the Wax Museum.
Historical figures.
Yes. And then they do birthday celebrations during the community gathering to make sure every student has their moment. And then, of course, they have awesome teachers who love their students. So that sums it up for the Charter School. It was a great visit. They're super fun, and such a tight-knit community. Because they're, they're really out there on the road. They're amazing. So that was the Charter School, and that takes us to, just today, we had a Superintendent/Student Leadership Advisory Council meeting, which was amazing, went very well. We started off by learning about learning and leadership styles, and that was told through the metaphor of a compass. So depending on your direction, whether you're north or west, you might be more of like an action-oriented, go-getting leader, or maybe more detail-oriented. We determined that I was a north leader, and I think the consensus with all the slackers was that if you were a north leader, you're kind of a bully.
Wow.
Because you get things done. You get things done.
Right. You just charge ahead.
You charge ahead. I mean, in my defense, Dr. Marr explained that your, your direction is who you are when you're most stressed, and I was like, yeah, I definitely get things done when I'm stressed. So that was very insightful. We learned a lot about ourselves, very cool and introspective. We also learned about messages for, no, we didn't learn about it. We worked on messages for rising freshmen because the freshman orientation nights are just around the corner in March. So we prepared videos for them to best welcome them and introduce them to our high schools. And then similarly, similarly, we talked about highlights and examples of care for the state of the schools. Dr. Smith's report coming up in February, so we can talk about how we best exhibit and exemplify care. And then we also talked about next steps for next quarter's Slack meeting. And I was super pleased to learn that the students really wanted to learn about the budget. So next week's meeting, next, not weeks, the next quarter's meeting will be talking about the budget, so they can learn where the money is going, and then they can give their say for next year's budget, so that they really understand how the money is going to best suit them and fit them. So very exciting, very informative, and we always have a lot of fun at Slack. Not pictured here is the, like, 11-box-high Chick-fil-A meal tower that we made, based on our recycling from the Chick-fil-A boxes, which was successfully carried without falling over to the recycling bin. So we were very productive in Slack. It's awesome.
All right. Fantastic.
All right. Okay, um, let's see. We have no recognition tonight, but we do have a public hearing. Dr. Marr, do you have a presentation, or are we just rolling through?
No, I'm just, I'm clearing out this power.
Okay. Um, this is the public hearing on the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school year calendar for both SMCPS and the Chesapeake Public Charter School. So I'm talking, so Kim can tell me whether we have any comments. No. Okay. So if there are no comments, then I will close the public hearing. People can still submit any comments, I think, until the end of the week to the BOE at smcps.org.
Yep.
And then next up, do we have any public comment?
We just have one public comment.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Penrod, do I have to read my statement, or you kind of, you kind of have it down? Thank you.
You have three minutes.
You have three minutes. Don't tell us anything that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be privy to.
If you don't already know, my name is Sarah Penrod. I'm the president of Eastmec. You've been sleeping the last four years. So, um, good evening. I am here today with a message. So as I watched the commissioners' meeting yesterday morning, I felt extremely disappointed. I showed up last, uh, last night to make public comments and express my disappointment, particularly to Commissioner Hewitt, because, well, Eastmec was running on the assumption that eventually the county commissioners would find a way to fund the budget, just as they have for the last several years. And I said that. But, you know, Commissioner Hewitt made it pretty clear that he didn't really intend to do that this time. So I'm here with a message today that, you know, each and every one of us, you know, our strength comes from within us as individuals. But as together, and for us here in St. Mary's County, I am 1,400 members strong, and as a state, 75,000 members strong. As a union, we are stronger together. And speaking for Eastmec, that we plan to fully support and stand beside the Board of Education in fighting the commissioners to get every last dollar that we deserve to fund our contract, however that may be. So as I told Commissioner Hewitt, or all of the commissioners last night, that I am very happy to bring all of my best good friends to the next meeting to stand up and show them exactly why teachers and our students deserve their support. I hope to see you all there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment, Kim? Okay. Next item is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda, the only thing on it is the approval of minutes of January 11th, January 17th, and January 24th, 2024. So I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have one action item this evening, and it is the approval of the fiscal year 2025 superintendent's recommended budget. After approval, then it will be forwarded to the commissioners of St. Mary's County. So I believe Ms. McCourt has a dated presentation from last week.
Yes, thank you. So this evening concludes your marathon month of budget work sessions. So I'll provide a quick recap from the last couple of meetings. Your budget priorities remain the same. Transportation with the bus driver attendant wage increase, bus driver retention stipend as a result of the sunset of the SRF funds, and contract increases for PVA operations and maintenance for the bus routes, as well as negotiations, Eastmec ESP contract, the blueprint, career ladder, and $60,000 starting salary mandate, in addition to an ESP increase for the minimum compensation of $16 an hour for our support staff. It is the last year of this mass unnegotiated agreement, which includes a step and 2% COLA. At this time, we've included a 10% increase for health insurance. We expect to receive the final rate at, in, at the end of this month, I'm sorry, at the end of February or the beginning of March. These three priorities total $14 million. Of that $14 million, we are requesting $9.5 million, almost $9.6 million from the county commissioners as a funding increase to support transportation in the amount of $815,000, focused predominantly on the operational PVA and maintenance increases, as well as $8.7 million to support the negotiations contract. You're very familiar with the fact that we have COMAR requirements on our budgetary reporting, back to MSDE and AIB and the General Assembly. The county commissioners also require that we submit a separate set of forms for our budgetary requests to them, and that includes two essential cost change forms. These are the same types of forms and requirements, reporting requirements they require of their county departments. We did go back and review our budget to determine whether there were any other opportunities to reduce that county commissioner request originally from the $14 million to the $9.5 million. And that's where we identified budgetary savings in our current fiscal year of $3.2 million, predominantly as a result of vacancies resulting in salary savings. The recommendation is to align that to the bus driver retention of $1.2 million and $2 million towards OPEB, other post-employment benefit costs. So that brings us to a total funding request to the county commissioners of $136.9 million, or a $9.5 million increase, $3.2 million planned use of fund balance incorporated in next year's budget, $502,000 for the Chesapeake Public Charter School use of fund balance, $143.4 million for the state funds, essentially a 0% increase, or $102,000, $2.6 million for federal funds, and $2.4 million for other funding sources, for a total recommended budget of $289.1 million, or $8.5 million increase. We all believed that there was going to be an increase in blueprint funding to St. Mary's County Public Schools to support the statutory mandates. However, that wasn't what we saw for FY '25. In fact, the impacts on state revenues are a result of the decline in enrollment, decline in farms applicants, as well as statute-mandated declines in transitional supplemental instruction, blueprint funds, and the blueprint transition grant. And all of that was compounded by an increase in county wealth. As the county wealth increases, the state obligation to funding decreases. On the expenditure side, the primary increases, again, are in the categories of instructional salaries and wages of $4.6 million, transportation of $2.1 million, and fixed charges of $5.2 million. And those areas clearly align with your budget priorities. So a bottom-line increase to the proposed budget for FY '25 of 3%.
Before we, before we leave that, before we leave that slide, the budget you see before you is a, is a modest budget. A 3% increase year over year is a pretty modest increase. The reason why the county, we're asking, the amount that we're asking from the county, which is almost a 7% increase as to what we had asked the year before, is because the state is not holding up its end of the bargain. And this is because the blueprint is flawed, is deeply and fundamentally flawed, because it doesn't, we keep on hearing that the counties only need to provide maintenance of effort to be able to realize all of the visionary elements of the blueprint, and that's not possible. All funding is wealth equalized. So half of our funding comes from the county, and half of it comes from the state. So if the state provides nothing, which is what's happening next year, then the rest of it falls to the county. Is that fair? No, I don't believe that that's fair, but that is the reality of the world around us. So in previous years, when the state did its part and funded us an increase year over year, we would only be asking the county for maybe $4 million, or maybe $5 million. A very modest and appropriate increase, but because the state is providing no additional, $100,000, basically a 0% increase, and the reason why they're doing that is because the county has more wealth. And if the county continues down the path that it's on, and people's homes become worth more and more, and incomes go up and up, the state will give even less each year after that, because it's wealth equalized. We've heard several times that, we've looked at the chart, and the chart from five years ago, or four years ago, or whatever was put out by the AIB, which has never been updated, which is because the AIB is not doing its due diligence to go back and look at how all the formulas are working, how the AIB could ever lay out 10 years and say, the counties don't have to invest any more money above maintenance of effort. They put zeros every single year. Ridiculous. Especially when you consider that all funding is wealth equalized and based on per pupil enrollment, which means there's no way to really adequately forecast what your costs are going to be year over year. That's why every single year, in December, each school system has to calculate what the PPA is, and ultimately, what the MOE expectation is. So here we are with a $9.5 million request to the county commissioners, and the reason why we're in this position is because the state's giving us no money. So even though our overall budget is only 3%, because no one else is helping us, we have to look to our county commissioners for the full amount of increase. And I, I state for the record, that is not fair. And I also state for the record, please go back and put pressure on Maryland State Department of Education and the AIB to have them explain how they possibly think you can go from a $47,000 starting salary to a $60,000 starting salary without giving us money to be able to do it. Ultimately, it's going to compel really, really challenging decisions. So.
The Department of Legislative Services provided a spending affordability briefing to the General Assembly back in November. And they did this and presented two budget balancing approaches. And those same two approaches apply to county governments, the state government, as well as the school district. And the two approaches are either to reduce ongoing spending or to enhance ongoing revenues. We don't have taxing authority with a school district.
So there is no way for us to increase revenues. None. We can't do a bake sale. We can't increase revenues. And we, we've already talked till we're blue- We can't increase revenues. And we, we've already talked till we're blue in the face to everybody up the road for years now to say, please go back and look at the formulas. The formulas don't work. This isn't working. This isn't working. And we've received, we haven't received any true response. So it all falls then on the county commissioners, and they are under no obligation whatsoever to increase our funding for next year. No legally mandated obligation to increase our funding. So if we look at simply reducing our spending, you're going to have to, the board, I'm going to present a budget. The board's going to decide what they want to do. You will decide as a body how you want to handle it. Compensation. So if we throw out all compensation and everybody makes the exact same amount of money as they made last year, this year, next year, that's one thing that you can do. If you decide that you are going to go forward with compensation with the negotiated agreement that we have entered into with S Massa the final year and honor whatever is negotiated with ESMIC and ESMIC E S P, then you're going to have to cut other elements of the school system. And they are two other buckets that are painful buckets. The first is, we go into instructional programming, and we start dismantling and taking away the things we have provided children over the last ten years because of a fantastic working partnership. Fairlead Academy, STEM Academy, G I S, A V P A, freezing course offerings at the secondary level, going through everything that's being offered in all three of our high schools, as well as at the Forest Center. That's the first painful cut, and we'll go through, and that's what, that's to be considered. The second is, we start cutting positions. And the last time we went through this, we went and we started with paraeducators. And I'm not going to propose that to you, because I believe that we need to, we need to maintain our paraeducators, we need to grow our paraeducators. And ultimately, it's our paraeducators that we hope will be encouraged to grow into teachers. That's our future. But we do have instructional resource teachers, and they are fantastic. And the service they provide to every elementary, middle, and high school to provide intervention, extension, enrichment, as well as help teachers grow, mentor new teachers, help people prepare for and perform well on assessments, that might be someplace we need to look. Because ultimately, we could draw down our I R Ts and have them return to the classroom. A very painful decision. And then the last is we just start increasing class sizes and we just start cutting teachers. So right now, if you go to the Saint Mary's County Public Schools, W W W S M C P S dot org, and you take a look at our average class size across all the grade levels, um, we have room that we could raise them up. You could have all the elementary schools staring at thirty kids in a classroom. You could have all the middle schools thirty to thirty-five, and you could have the high schools about the same. That's something that other counties are definitely staring at. So that would be the third, programming, staff, class size. And then the last, and we have Ms. Funia here, and Ms. Funia also spoke last night to the county commissioners to talk about the unintended consequences of the blueprint funding and the ham-fisted way it went about saying seventy-five percent of all the funding needs to be spent at schools based on the student enrollment and these mitigating factors. Nobody ever talked to charter schools. Nobody ever talked about the great programming that we have, the wonderful discussions that we've had, the way in which we find funding and find our way and partner through. But if we align to exactly two thirty-four, that would be devastating cuts to the charter school. And if you want to see what that looks like, go to Baltimore City right now, because they're right in the middle of it. And some of the charter schools in Baltimore City that have provided incredible service to families and students, they may have to close their doors. These are the things that we would have to do to reduce ongoing spending. And these are ultimately decisions that will be presented back to you.
If no revenue increases materialize.
If there is no revenue increase. So, on the other side, instead of cutting, enhance ongoing revenues. Now, we don't have any ability to do that. But boy, were we paying attention during the budget work session that the county commissioners had, because they talked about what kind of revenue would be generated if we went back to twenty, two thousand and three, and we charged and they, we raised the property tax from eight point four seven eight to nine oh three eight, so ninety, ninety pennies for every hundred dollars worth of appraised value. That would net the, the county eight point six million dollars. If we took the homestead tax credit and we moved it from three up to five, that would net us about another nine hundred thousand dollars. And if we went to the income tax, the piggyback income tax, and went from three to three point one percent, that would net out three point seven million dollars. So by ninety, ninety cents on the dollar, five percent, homestead tax credit, three point one percent overall for the piggyback tax, we're talking about thirteen to fourteen million dollars worth of revenue that would come into the county. And why do we use those numbers? Because those were the numbers of Saint Mary's County twenty years ago. If we went back to twenty twenty-three, property tax was ninety cents, income tax was three point one percent, and the homestead tax credit was five percent. Sorry, two thousand and three, twenty years ago, right? Since then, we have lowered taxes in this county, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then we lowered nine. We've lowered taxes and the burden on our, on our people nine times. Raised it once, then lowered it twice right afterwards. All I know is that we can't continue to be the school system we currently are with the amount of money that we're being provided. We really need to have partners. We really need to have problem solvers. We really need to have people that understand that the greatest investment you can make is in your children. They always yield the best dividend. And failing to invest in children is catastrophic. So here we are. Um, we're going to send over a budget. We're going to continue to make ourselves available. We are going to talk the talk, walk the walk. We are transparent. If there is an actual question asked, there will always be an answer given. You do have to listen. But there will always be an answer given. This is, without a doubt, twenty twenty-five is going to be the most challenging year in public education in the state of Maryland since the pandemic. And if you don't, if you think I'm being hyperbolic, read the newspaper.
Yeah, pick up the Baltimore Sun.
Read the Baltimore Banner. Right? Read whatever you want to read and hear about every single county. I'm making a presentation that every single superintendent in the state of Maryland is presenting. And I don't understand why the elected officials, not necessarily down here, but up, up the road, why they can't hear us. I, I don't understand. On one hand, we're talking about this unparalleled investment in education, and I say, I ain't seeing it down here in the mother county. So I can only, you know, if you want to know what the weather's doing, walk outside and look up. And right now, it's, it's raining in Saint Mary's County, and I look to the best of all of us that we find our way through to take care of our kids and take care of the people who take care of our kids every single day. This is truly the most important investment that we make. So with that, I am now turning over my soapbox.
So the county commissioners are slated to review your budget request on February twenty-seventh. They are slated to approve their twenty twenty-five recommended budget for public hearing on March twenty-sixth, and then have their public hearing on April twenty-third. So now I turn it back over to the board chair. Anyone have any questions?
I have a, a comment, um, sort of address what Dr. Smith said. I, um, about three years ago, um, I attended in Calvert County, a presentation by Dr. Kerwin. And what I remember him saying succinctly was that it was going to cost three point eight billion dollars. And the impression that I got was that the county, excuse me, the state was going to fund that money for blueprint. So my question is, uh, you know, where's the money?
It's tragic to think that Dr. Kerwin didn't understand that three point eight billion dollars is wealth equalized.
Is what?
Wealth equalized, which means that half of the three point eight billion dollars would come from the state, and the other half would come from the counties. And, and from the very beginning, they never told the counties that, that it was wealth equalized, and they were on the hook for the other half. And they never updated any of their charts, and they never updated any of the laws. And so really what they've done is they've obligated the, the state to pay its half, but not the locals. And I can absolutely understand why every single county commissioner group and the Maryland associations of county commissioners, I understand why they are feeling as though they are being put in an untenable situation, because they have been told for four years that they don't have to put one penny in, and somehow miraculously, the state will award all of this money to be able to do all of this work. And from the very outset, we said, that, that can't be. That can't be. Three point eight billion dollars isn't coming from the state. It's wealth equalized. So, um, uh, you know, keep in mind that Dr. Kerwin doesn't work for a public school system. He works for, I believe, is it John Hopkins? No.
He's retired, but he was the chancellor of the University of Maryland system.
I think he's adjunct. So, um, I, I, again, if you want to know how money works, you gather together all the CFOs from the twenty-four school systems, and you ask them very pointed questions. And to my understanding, to date, that still hasn't happened by either with the A I B or Brett Kerwin or anybody else to actually get in a room to talk to the people about the incredibly complex way in which money truly works and funding actually gets to kids. So, here's where we are.
Um, I just have a comment. Um, so with the what-if scenario of reducing ongoing spending, um, I know, I know everyone on this board would be absolutely heartbroken to make any of these cuts if we had to. And I know, I like to think there's a world in which we never have to consider that. Um, but in doing my duty as representing the student body and part of the, the staff body, I know that reducing the instructional programming and increasing class size, I don't, I would, I would urge you not to make that decision. Um, of course, because, I mean, STEM, G I S, A V P A are things that keep our students wanting to come to our schools. They are so, um, so critical in making our schools stand out. So cutting that, I mean, of course, would be tragic, and we all know that. And then increasing class size, it may look like in the report that we do in many areas have space for students, but I would say the more de facto experience for teachers and students is that increasing class size, uh, would be pretty drastic. It doesn't feel in that room that there is enough space for everybody. There's not even always enough desks, depending on where you are and what room you're in. Um, so increasing class size would also be very painful. And I want to make that, like, I want to make that aware, because, um, I know teachers would feel even more overwhelmed, and students would feel extra sweaty, I suppose, because it's just so many people in there. Um, so, and then of course, C P C S, we know that, um, that, that is a beloved part of the community. So that would just be my perspective as the student and as the student representative, that those, um, those would be horrible, so.
So Dr. Smith and I had many discussions on this slide. Um, because we, we've never, we've never presented a worst-case scenario before. Um, but based on the comments and the meetings that we've had, and that includes both local and I thank him and Tammy for also making the rounds up in the legislature with me. That it, it, it had to be presented, because everyone is always like, well, we just won't, you know, we just, we won't fund salaries. We won't fund the contract. And it's like the easy answer, because it's the biggest chunk of money, right? But, um, it's just, it's, it's not fair to anyone down here unless we present what all of the options are, because I think people really need to understand where we are and is, you know, and as, you know, Mrs. Penrod said, you know, we've always made it work. They've always come up with the money. But I don't see that appetite right now from across the street. And I certainly don't see it coming out of anything in Annapolis in the way of more state funding. So, um, it, it would be very unfair to our community if we waited until April twenty-third, right, to kind of ring this bell, so to speak. Because then, you know, it's like we knew the train was coming, but we didn't tell anyone that it was.
Right.
So.
So we're blowing the horn.
Right. So, you know, it, Dr. Smith and I had, we had, we had a lot of discussion on how this needed to look and what needed to, you know, how it needed to be presented. But, um, I mean, as I've said before, the school system will not look the same next year. Right? And that was before all of this. So it's still not going to look the same as it did, and if we have to enact any of these items, then it's really not going to look the same.
Right. And I, I, I do think it was, it, as ugly as the slide seems for what it contains, it is perfect to include this, and it was imperative to do so, because it really helps everyone understand the gravity of the situation for our community and the greater community, the people across the street, people in Annapolis. So this is very necessary. Um, it's something else we need to consider, but, but thank you for helping everyone understand that.
Right. And it doesn't seem ugly. It is ugly.
Yeah, I mean, one hundred percent is ugly.
You know, it, it just, it is. And, you know, and e- e- each of the three buckets, you know, the, the people are going to lose our, our, our staff, our employees and our students a- a- across the board.
And none of them should have to make a sacrifice in this scenario.
So, and, you know, so.
I kind of want to put in that I think that COVID brought things to us that caused us now to make these decisions. For example, the virtual academy. I looked at the budget on the count, and it's not, it's not, uh, it's not possible. It's not possi, it's too expensive in that building to, um, have just a few staff, and the students come for testing. So I think some things are very plausible to just look at the budget and say, yeah, it was nice while it lasted. The state paid for it, the federal government, but we gotta, we gotta cut those ties, because we want to honor the teachers. That's our main goal, is to make sure that they are paid. And we don't want to be waiting for this until two years from now. We want to start now, so that way, when that year is due, we're not putting in as much. So I think the teachers, the compensation is off the table.
I think we need to be careful about unintended consequences of, of, you know, sort of willy-nilly cutting the virtual academy, especially because of there are more students that are served than you realize.
Alright, so, so wait, so, alright, so let me, let me clarify. So the money that came into the system from, from, uh, COVID, the restricted funds are going away regardless. None of these items that are on this, on this slide right now have anything to do with, with COVID and the money that we received for that. These are things that we've been operating with for the past ten, fifteen years. And that have been stood up as we, you know, as our, as our student population changed, as our, you know, student interest changed, and as we wanted to offer more, um, opportunities for our students, right? So none of these things really have anything to do with, you know, and I don't, I don't want, I don't want anyone to be left with the impression that there is more meat in this budget than what is, than what we are showing. There's, there's, there's really nothing else in there that can be cut in order to meet the, the request.
Well, what I should have done is, before I put the what-if scenario reduce, what-if scenario enhance, I should have said what-is scenario. And what is, is that the, the, all the S R funds are gone. We're cutting those ninety-some positions. That's already, like, that's already, that's already, like, that's not even part of this conversation. That is, that's, that's done. Those, right now, we're trying to find each one of, we're trying to find each one of those people a home this year and next year. That's why we're, we're doing several things to kind of prepare for that. At our next board meeting, we'll, we'll talk about the things that we've, that we're working on, just to place all of these people who the, the, the grant is exiting, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. That is, all of it is completely separate from this itself.
Right. And the, the, the L E A's across the state are in this situation right now, and not because of COVID, and not because of the pandemic, but they are in this situation, because we have, we have implemented the blueprint, and the individuals who crafted the blueprint and voted on the blueprint and are now implementing the blueprint have probably never set foot in a public school system, and they have no idea how anything works, regardless, right? I mean, the- I mean, the, the conversations that I've had, and I've pretty much been strafed for them by those people, that, you know, they are just utterly clueless as to how things operate within a school and how the money operates. And, and it is clearly evident.
And within the, well, keep in mind that within the blueprint, there is, there is no money, there's, there's no money set aside for fine arts.
No.
Or athletics, or extracurriculars, or any, or, or any of the things that, 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 that matter so deeply to children. I mean, that's why we, that's why we do this whole, you know, connected, accountable, resilient, and excited to learn. That excited to learn is, is predicated on all of the things that we do to make schools special.
To make everyone care about it.
And, right, and be, and be, and be part of it. This, this is a fan-, this is a fantastic school system that, that has produced some of the most exceptional people. I mean, some of the most earth-shaking, fantastic leaders that have gone out and done incredible things. And they have done so because of the unparalleled opportunity and investment that we, that we have. And so ultimately, if you get down to a lights-on budget, right, you're, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna end up cutting things that, to take, and I've always, I've always been of the, of the opinion that you never do any, you never take anything away from a child. You should never take anything away from a child, you should never take anything away from a child. And you should never offer anything to a child that you can't continue to give to all the children for years and years and years and years and years and years going forward. So this is a very painful thing to even be discussing. But I will tell you that this will all be done in public. There won't be, like, something done over here. If we, if the money that's made available, we will then walk through exactly how it will be spent, what will be done, and everything like that. If indeed, what has been presented is a, is a maintenance-of-effort flat funding from both the state and the county, then very challenging decisions are going to go to the board. Because ultimately, the superintendent and the fantastic staff with whom I get to work every single day, we pres-, we propose a budget. You ultimately deliberate and then implement a budget.
And in the defense of the county commissioners, for the past three years, they have been told by the Maryland Association of Counties and the AIB that, that they will not have to write the check for the blueprint, right? They have been told.
In December, they were told.
And, and, right, I mean, there. Three of them came back from that winter conference and called me and said, this is what they said.
Just so you know, Brett Kerwin said, you don't have to, we don't have to spend any money.
Right.
School systems have enough, they just need to be more transparent. Okay.
They also said life is a fair ghetto, right?
Well.
So.
Not the commissioners.
No.
Came out of the AIB.
Yeah, never, ever, no, the commissioners have never said.
That came out of someone from the Accountability and Implementation Board.
They have never signed, yeah. So, again, I have, I am unicorn and rainbows over here.
Rainbows, yes.
I am hope springs eternal.
Mr. Silver Linings.
I am poems. I am art. I am looking forward to the play tomorrow night at Chopticon High School. You know, this is a, this is a solvable situation. There just has to be the will. There just has to be the will. There is the capacity to solve any problem. There just has to be the determined will to do so. And you know what? Just like the, the fire chiefs came forward and said, fire tax, fire tax, fire tax. We need to do this to do our work. Blueprint tax, blueprint tax, blueprint tax. It is a blueprint tax. And in fact, when we raised the income from 3% to 3.17, we said, we did it to take care of the money that we're going to need for the blueprint. Well, here it is. Blueprint tax, blueprint tax, blueprint tax. And again, all we need is the will, so.
Go, Mrs. Washington, quick, before he starts again.
No, I am done, I am done.
Okay. The budget is a bare-bones budget. We're doing what we have to do. Transportation, we have to make sure that we have buses, that buses are rolling, that students are able to get to school. And doing so, we have to make sure that there's a wage increase, a stipend retention, and a contract increase. Then negotiated agreements. We have to make sure that ESMIC, ESP, SMAS, have what they need so they want to stay with us. And it's considered respect. Other counties, they start out with much more money than we do. We're already behind. St. Mary's County is a destination.
Right.
It's not like you have to want to come to St. Mary's County. We at the southern tip of the western shore. Also, we have to deal with health insurance increase. Because we may have a call, we have to have money to pay for that. We reviewed our budget, and we went back to identify savings. We're using part of our fund balance, which made a reduction for our budget at only 3% increase. That's a very small amount. The superintendent has acted responsibly by doing, meeting his legal obligations to present a budget, a recommended budget to the Board of Education for us to consider. The maintenance of effort does not meet our basic educational requirements, nor does it meet the blueprint requirements. So the reduction would negatively impact our people, our programs, and the performance of our students. I asked the commissioners to do what's right for the students, for ESMIC, ESP, SMAS, so that we can have a world-class school system. People determine whether they're going to move to an area based on the quality of the schools. If the quality of the schools are poor, people will not want to move to this county. So it is up to them. We don't have any money, the ball is in their court. We asked for citizens to come out and speak under public comment to the Board of County Commissioners, expressing their concern about the programs that could be possibly cut, instructional staff cut, and an increase in class sizes. Those are the things that we value. We have to meet the individual needs of each student so that they will become productive, contributing members of society. And with a school system that can only do the basic, we will not be able to do that well at all. So I'm appealing to them to do the right thing. Thank you.
I will simply add that I very much appreciate the work that both Mrs. Bailey and Dr. Smith, as well as Mrs. McCourt have done, along with all those that support them over not just this year and this budget discussion, but the last number of years. They have done everything that they've been able to do in order to help the commissioners understand what the long-term implications of the blueprint and our need to, to cover the negotiated agreement. We have been incredibly fortunate because working with our associations, they have, they have made it possible for us to have something that around the state really is unheard of, and that is a four-year negotiated agreement. Which means that we can predict year over year, we can show very specifically what the cost is going to be in order to cover that portion of our budget. And that is a very, very significant portion of our budget. And it is through the work that Dr. Smith and Mrs. Bailey and others have done to make sure that the commissioners are kept apprised of all of that on an ongoing basis. Not just meeting with them, but being on the phone with them, helping them understand. And, and so I applaud all of their efforts. And, and I echo the, the words that my colleagues have said. This is important. People come to this community in large part because of the work that's here, but also what is it going to mean for their families. And because we, as a school system, have been able to do so much over the years to provide engaging, interesting programs that meet the needs of our students, this is an attractive place to be, which means that our property values are held up. If we begin the slide back to where we were years ago, there is going to be a negative impact in many ways across this community. We are educating the community members of our future. Many of the people who grow up here, stay here. I think we need to remember that, and remember that it's important to support them.
All right, may I have a motion? Mary.
Okay. All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2025 budget as presented and forwarded to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have no informational items. The next board meeting will be on Wednesday, February 7. The executive session beginning at 8 o'clock, and the open meeting at 9:00. And with that, we are adjourned.